Oh, you already put your stuff in?
Here, we can give it out to Ryan. Did you already get that request?
Yeah, I got it.
Did you already get that request?
Yeah, I told you.
Hey, Martin. That public request on the...
Yeah.
Did you finish it?
I did not.
Here you go. Okay.
Yeah, no worries. You probably don't have...
Yeah.
She can look. She can look at all that. Just gonna say nothing on my phone, no text, no voice call.
Is that like a fire alarm going?
Well, I always like to... I get two... That's a friend to call. You can always reach if he has... One I have. You're interested in that?
I got your name registered on that.
And that's why it's important. That's why it's important.
You better be thinking of it.
Yeah. It's worth it. I don't have anything else.
The last month, it's true. This month, two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh-huh. Uh-huh. He took it really, really cheap. Twenty percent. Right?
I didn't make it all the way.
Yeah.
We're talking. Okay, I'll call the order, our regular city council meeting for December thirteenth. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all and welcome. Uh, roll call, Cindy.
Honorable Mayor Roberts.
I am happily present.
Councilmember Olahousers.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Councilmember Rattell.
Present.
Councilmember Leichman.
Here.
Councilmember Garth.
Present.
Councilmember Fulton.
Present.
Councilmember Pupkin.
Here.
Wonderful, whole house. Okay, uh, this is the opportunity on the agenda where citizens have an opportunity to speak to council. Um, actually, hey Cindy, I think there was a couple of people that actually signed up. Uh, council did receive some written comments from Bonnie Mager. I think you've all got that via email. And Jeff Moat, Jeff, come on up. Um, please state your name and your address for the record and limit your comments about two minutes so we can get to the agenda. Appreciate that.
My name is Jeff Moat. I live at five one four Seneca Heights. Been a resident for twenty-six years in that location. I also own a home across the street at four oh five Seneca Heights. I'm here because I'm extremely dissatisfied with, uh, the snow plowing that took been took place on, uh, Saturday. Um, what I'm more dissatisfied with was to find out a gigantic pile of snow pushed in my yard. I'm trying to figure out at what point that the city supersedes my rights to my private property by pushing snow in my yard from the street. Um, I realize that you have an obligation to clear the street, but at what point does that mean that you can push snowberms into my yard? I emailed you about this earlier. Also talked with my neighbor down the street. Um, I have a short video I'd like to play if that's all right with you.
Uh, if it's quick, sure.
Um, I believe...
Or you can email Cindy.
I believe it's a minute and thirty-eight seconds.
Uh, would it be easier to email it to me and we can get it off?
Either way, he's very dissatisfied. So, um, he had six feet of snow pushed in his yard, um, on top of his water main. Um, I've driven around my neighborhood and seen this multiple times. And I realize that you're obligated. I find myself as a snowplow operator for the Department of Transportation, and I can't even conceive how this happens. I understand that we don't stop at everybody's driveway, that, you know, there's gonna be a berm there and people are responsible for clearing it. But this went far beyond. The street was already cleared. I've sent you a picture from my security camera of your operator pushing it in my yard as I'm waving at him to stop.
Actually, but could you resend that? Because I didn't...
Okay.
I saw the link, but it didn't...
I'll be glad to.
Yeah, and what's your phone number, Jeff?
My phone number is five oh nine three eight nine one five two two. Um, this practice has been going on. Uh, it went on in the cul-de-sac just down from me, and then they filed a complaint, and all we did was switch yards. We went to another guy's yard. I'm here to get this practice stopped.
Okay.
I just put a snow blower on a lowboy to go down to the viaduct in Spokane because we have no place left to push snow. I understand it's an issue, but we have to go with a snow plow and shoot it into a truck and cart it off. And I am wondering why the city is not doing the same.
We've actually been... Our crews are out there doing that now, right? Because there's berms everywhere.
I realize snow is a touchy deal and nobody likes it. But again, I don't understand where the superseded pushing snow piles into people's yard. That's not right. So, I'd like to respond.
Okay, you bet, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, that's all that's signed up or sent an email. Anybody since we've got a lot of people here, anybody wish to comment to council? Okay, how about on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom? Going once, going twice. Okay, folks, let's move on. Um, our minutes from our regular city council meeting of November twenty-second. Our council, you've had an opportunity to review those. If there's no corrections, I would accept the motion to approve them.
I'll move.
Second. Thank you. Motion and second to approve our regular city council meeting minutes of November twenty-second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those are approved. And also the special city council meeting that we had on November twenty-nine.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those minutes are approved. Vouchers and payroll, Cindy.
So vouchers, um, are the seventy-two thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars fifty-four cents. There were some other tables which is the annual of two hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and a tenth for total of eight hundred forty-eight thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty cents. And so payroll of one million thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Your Honor, the Finance Committee reviewed these items. I would move approval.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and second to approve both our vouchers and our payroll as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, Cindy. Vouchers and payroll approved. We did not have any claims for damages, but there were a couple of small contracts, um, master software service agreement, and Bulldog Brewers City Hall Drinking Fountain and Geol Toilets. We got that taken care of, thankfully. Um, moving on to information items. This is for Chief Jenkins, who's gonna present the firefighter of the year. Chief.
Well, I guess it's out of the bag now, so I'll make this really quick, Your Honor. Hey, good evening, council. I won't take much of your time, Your Honor. We have an extremely busy agenda for this evening. But on a good note, every year, the battalion chiefs and myself sit down and we try to select an amazing individual who went above and beyond. And I really wish I could give this out to about six other folks. Truth of the matter is that we unanimously selected an individual, one of our volunteer firefighters, uh, that we have seen literally run into a burning, burning house. We've seen him rescue a cat, but for some reason, he doesn't like to rescue bats. I don't know why that is. Brandon, the cat's out of the bag. Come on up. Come on, it's not a bat out of the bag. Uh, I'd like to recognize firefighter Brandon Tillman this evening. Brandon's been with us for five years with the fire department. He, when I first took office five years ago, he came to the station as retired military veteran as a security force cop. Um, and he said that I was the first to get approval on Fairchild Air Force Base as an interim, uh, interim, uh, to come and pick another occupation or career field that I would like to get, uh, get involved in. So Fairchild relieved him early for six months, and he chose the fire department. And we always joke in the fire department that firefighters, police officers have one thing in common. We both wanna be firefighters. I think Chief would like that as well. So, but also, so Brandon's been with the department for five years, helps stand up our volunteer program that we're running today. Uh, the guy's amazing. He's involved. Anytime you need a, a helping hand, Brandon is always there to help out. He's super involved in his kids with their scouts, uh, both boy and girl scouts. And I can't think of a better person than more deserving than you, Brandon, to receive this annual firefighter of the year. Chief, it's an honor. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Hello.
Yeah. Martini Free Press here.
We all wanna shake hands.
I didn't know it was gonna happen. All right, smile.
Great work. Yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry, I'll run down the rear service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Well done. Okay, moving on, item J, appointments. We don't have any, but we do have several pages full of agenda item, action items. So, we will move right on to our action items, and this is gonna be a public hearing for our 2023 budget. This is the final public hearing for the public. Cindy.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have gone through all of our, um, public meetings. As you're aware, we've discussed our general fund revenues. We've discussed every single department's budget. We've gone over all of our utility budgets. We've gone over our discretionary items. Um, so this, what this public hearing is for is just one last opportunity for the public to comment. Um, I have no other action for you at this time. We'll discuss the budget ordinance later on in the meeting. I will say I have received no public comment, either verbally or written, regarding the budget since our last meeting.
Okay, any comments for Cindy? Questions to this, uh, public hearing? So any comments from the public regarding our 2023 budget? Yes, Lucas, come on up.
Uh, my name's Lucas Walsh. I'm, uh, I live at fifty-six sixteen West Smith in Geiger Heights. This sounds like a budget question. It may not be, I'm sorry. But I, I remember that, uh, the city stood to potentially incur a, uh, a, um, an expense for, uh, clearing the hotels, um, trouble that that person, I don't know, I don't know if they've actually exceeded their ninety-day limit, but, uh, is that part of the budget? Is that, is that the ninety?
That is not part of the 2023 budget now. That's totally... It's not going right now. It's not part of the budget.
I was just curious.
It's still in the process.
It's when I first got here that I heard about that. I'm like, is that the ninety? I just think...
Going through the process.
I'll let you speak.
Thanks, Lucas. Anybody else? How about online? Anybody on Zoom? Well, let me ask, do we have anybody from the public online? Okay, good. Okay, going once, going twice? Yes, Mark, go ahead.
Sorry. Uh, I have a question about the project manager with one of the discretionary funding requests. Um, and maybe a lot of those discretionary requests. We, we, I think we were in favor of all those, correct?
No, no. Uh, the, I was, I'll go over that when we go over the final, uh, ordinance again. But the project manager was not selected for funding for this next year. Several of those were and weren't. Um, and kind, uh, based on the feedback you gave me on the last special meeting that we had is how I have changed up those discretionary in some way. But I was gonna, um, go over the line item by line item with you when we do that special.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. I appreciate it. And if there's no final comments, I'm gonna close this public hearing on our 2023 budget. Moving on to resolutions. And before we get started, this first resolution, there's, um, strong opinions on both sides, so I just asked that we, as a, as a council, um, pick terms speaking. Let's try to, you know, share our opinion on the matter and, and we can get through this. So, resolution F zero nine two. This is the UGA land swap application. Todd, please.
Hear me, Mark.
You've seen this before. Uh, I've presented this at the last city council meeting, and I can give you a refresher, and I can just kinda get on the, on the topics of where we're at with the UG application. You know, obviously, this is a, this is a application to Spokane County, and it's just an application. There is no land use decision, uh, that the city is required to be part of this. And, uh, we're trying to move through this, kinda explain where it's at. Um, the, the, tonight's proposal is to remove ten acres from the UGA to the south and move it ten acres to the north, North Side of Chene. Uh, the proposed land use designation in both areas. Uh, currently, we have what they call the critical areas limited residential, which is four units per acre. That's what we're proposing up north with the same, uh, kind of even, even swap, four units per acre. Um, there, this lot is not of an expansion of the UGA. This, this land swap is ten acres for ten acres. Um, council action tonight is to consider resolution F zero nine two, authorizing a submittal, uh, of an application to Spokane County to amend the UGA in the 2023. Kind of see the proposal. There's ten acres down here. This is on the south side of, um, Chene. Here is the, the city limit line kind of right in here. This is the south side UGA. This is, uh, Chene Spangle Road coming into town. And the addition is taking this ten acres and going just north of Paradise Road for ten acres up north of Paradise Road. I did a, a strikeout on, on the original one because after consulting with, with legal, uh, I just did put in this RCW. Um, basically, the reason why, uh, I, I called it a open record public hearing and then one closed review, that is not really the case. That is really for, um, quasi judicial when we're making land use applications. Uh, it was in the wrong context to that end, uh, so I kinda struck that out. It's not a public hearing as council's not acting on a quasi judicial fashion. It's a legislative action only to submit an application to Spokane County. Um, this is just kind of the, the background. Uh, planning commission received, uh, one phone, one phone call against the, uh, project. At the planning commission meeting fourteen, people spoke on the UGA. Uh, ten were kind of in favor of the proposal, and four were not in favor, and the planning commission, uh, recommended supporting the application with a vote of five to zero. Why are we doing this? Um, basically, uh, we have a kind of a proposal to go one way or the other down below. We, we don't have a lot of, uh, development happening. And, and all this is, the UGA is just a roadmap. What the UGA we have right now is in Spokane County. That's Spokane County land that is not governed by the city of Chene. The only way we're, we can take, uh, the UGA, UJ, UCA in is to, uh, basically go through an annexation process, and that's bringing it into the city. Uh, there's a couple of ways you can do it. Obviously, somebody can come up with an annexation application to be considered to come into the city. Or if our utilities kind of extend into that UGA, we have a, what we call a no protest agreement, which they sign. Uh, once they build or once they extend the utilities in there, you have the option to, uh, bring it into the city. So, we have, uh, five hundred and seventy-eight acres of land. Uh, a large portion of that was, uh, owned by, is still owned by the city of Chene, and that's around the wastewater, um, wetlands. Um, we have about roughly two hundred and sixty-some acres remaining, uh, around that area. It's been in that area since, uh, around the early two thousands, and, uh, we shifted to the south. We have ninety-three acres that we did annex into the, into the city. And, uh, while the growing, um, you know, it was in the early two thousands, we did get a, a growth with some apartment units, and we got some more growth with some, um, additional townhouses. growth with some additional townhouses, a few houses down below. But they are still within the template of that 93 acres. And that extra 260 acres down below has not been developed. You received this information on an email. Just want to kind of highlight, I said it before, the county does receive UGA applications, and they are typically for property owners who are considered of UGA land. The county really is the authority to make the decision on whether they want to move or exchange that UGA land. And that property is still in the county. Laws have been established, Growth Management Act, to control the amount of UGA land a city can have, which is typically when we do do our comprehensive update, we check our population growth, we take our growth compared to how much available land we have, and then we make that decision. And that's basically how we manage growth. UGA land, again, remains in the county until the city annexes the land. Annexing into the UGA is typically through an application process. I mentioned that. Or it's through a no protest agreement when they extend utilities into the property. And that is a discretion. When they go with a no protest agreement, city council can actually annex it in on their discretion. Typically, UGA land is the zone designation identified with the city. So you see a lot of county land around that may be zoned agriculture or something different. But when it kind of comes into the UGA, we really kind of identify it in that character. That's how we have the CALR designation, where we're pulling it from. And UGA land is developed in the county, used as city utilities. Again, we have a no protest agreement or an application to annex it. This is the city's action. If they want to be annexed in the city, this is the city's action. For reference, right now, this is the area. It's about approximately 268 acres in this area. This would be considered the Columbia Plateau Trail. Previously, it was the Fish Lake Trail. This area right in here, this is all of the cities, and part of that is the wetlands that the city currently owns. I would be happy to answer any questions. I know that Bonnie Mager would like to come up and do a presentation and talk on the issue as well.
Could you put the map back up?
Sure.
I just had one question. I'm a little confused. So up at the corner of Best and 904, in the northeast area, right?
Yep.
That's part of the city now?
It's UGA.
Oh, it's part of the UGA now?
Yep.
Okay. So I didn't know. Okay.
I believe that happened around the same time or even before. It's been in the UGA for quite a while.
Yeah, no, I just thought that gentleman just...
He found out, yeah, he did not want to be extended into...
The city?
Yeah.
Okay. That's why I was a little confused. I didn't remember that it was...
Yeah. No, it was pre-existing. We didn't...
Thank you. Bye-bye.
I got a question for you. So can you explain, in the ear, everyone, I guess, we work to annex property that has utilities or is kind of within city limits but has always been out of it without a land swap. Like, where are we, is there a capacity that we can only be at before we have to swap land? And are we at that capacity now where we couldn't annex something without swapping something that's outside of city limits?
Hope I get your question right. So we made the decision back in the early 2000s or late 1990s to go ahead and annex this land based on our comprehensive plan, based on a 20-year growth projection, that we would be having at least, I think it's 3,700, 3,900 population growth within that 20 years. So based on that, we did this designation of land that says most of the growth is going to come down here. And when we get to 50% of that growth, then we can reestablish new UGAs. In the interim, the only way we can do that is to take UGA and kind of swap it back and forth.
So I guess the next little, my question would be, is that roughly 10 acres, could you annex it in without a swap? Or does it have to be a swap?
It would have to be during, when we reach that 50% population, then we go through a comprehensive plan ourselves or a comprehensive plan amendment that would make the case to annex additional land. And that would be in the future.
There is, there was a lawsuit several years ago that locked our footprint at the acreage at that point. I can't remember what year it was, but it was a lawsuit, right?
Yeah.
That said that the city of Cheney's boundary, our footprint at that point could not expand. But new legislation allowed land swaps. As long as our acreage doesn't grow into the UGA, we can swap them, right?
Yeah, I think that was more or less on what the county got. A lawsuit that kind of put the county on pause for a number of years until that.
Yes, 2025, I think, or something like that is one that, I think 2025.
The land swap legislation went through, we picked off the city, people that have the growth, you know, a lot of areas that aren't growing growth, areas that are growing, your pockets, a lot of growth. Cities, areas have been going much.
Want to ask Bonnie to share some things? Just didn't have an opportunity last time. There we go. Dave, this is yours, mine?
Yes.
My mask. I have someone highly vulnerable at home, and so I wear it in public. But thank you all very much for giving us the opportunity to present to you tonight. I will be presenting kind of the forward and the closing. And because I'm somewhat of a troglodyte when it comes to any kind of PowerPoint, I have someone who's very experienced here with me, Rebecca Long, who will be giving the middle part for you. And she's done an excellent job. I really appreciate her very much.
Good evening. I'm Bonnie Mager, and I live at 15220 West Jerry B. Lane, just outside of Cheney. We've been our home for nearly 30 years. My husband was a professor at East Washington University until he retired in 2009. My daughter-in-law's taught at Best and Sound Maze. All our children graduated from Cheney schools. Our grandchildren all go to Cheney schools. My oldest granddaughter is now at Eastern. And my youngest one will start kindergarten in the fall. Reason I'm telling you this is that I'm trying to say we love Cheney, and we're loyal to Cheney. It's a great place to live, to work, and bring up children, as you all know. And that is why we're fighting so hard to stay here and develop an old-fashioned neighborhood like I and many of you grew up in, where you knew your neighbors and they knew you, where as a child you were safe to roam your neighborhood, knock on your neighbor's door and be welcomed in, and where on occasion, if you got in trouble, your mother knew before you got home. Like most projects, this development started with a dream. My husband and I have reached an age where we want to have a yard instead of 40 acres, and be close enough to be part of our young grandchildren's lives on a daily basis. We also want to design it so that it will attract families that want that sense of community that we had when we were growing up, because neighbors knew neighbors and socialized with each other on a regular basis. After some research and several meetings with the planning department, starting back in June of 2019, we were striking out, trying to secure a piece of property that our 20 to 30 home development dream would fit on. But just as we were beginning to give up and look elsewhere, we got wind of a parcel that was just shy of 10 acres that was coming up for sale. It only one problem. It was a Jason 2, but outside the city limits. So I contacted the city building and planning department and met with them to see if we could make an application to be included. And this might speak to what you were asking, right? We were told it was unlikely that Cheney was growing fast enough to justify an expansion of the UGA for several years, but that the city was running out of family housing stock with potential development opportunities. And there was some desire to reconfigure the UGA by taking land out of the UGA in one place southeast of the railroad tracks and placing it on the northwest side of Cheney by means of a land exchange. The staff offered to explore this idea with us with the mayor, the county, who would have to approve this application under their county process. I'm John Justin, and I'm at the mayor with Mark, Todd, Brett, and Scott Chesney, the county planning director, on November 22, 2021. That's our development and the possibility of including our parcel in a land exchange. We left the meeting being very hopeful and created the Normal Paradise LLC and purchased the land at the corner of Normal Park and Paradise. But unfortunately, there was not enough time left to get everything teed up for the city to meet the December application deadline. So we had to wait another year before that would be possible. We continue to work on marketing and recruitment while we waited to go through the city approval process, including the hearing before the planning commission on November 22. You can imagine how pleased we were the night of the hearing to come away with an enthusiastic 5-0 vote supporting the land swap. Now we have to tell you about our project, why we think it's a win-win vote for Cheney and for us, and to come away with your enthusiastic support as well. And I'm going to turn it over to Becca so that she can run the slideshow, answer some of the questions that came up at the last meeting, and I will give the square C package to pass out to you.
Thanks, Bonnie. Okay. So like Bonnie said, we started this project in 2019. So this slide kind of talks through, highlights the dates, the key moments in this project timeline of when folks from our organization met with city, the planners, and different staff officials along the way. So June 19th, all the way up, including the November 14th planning commission meeting where the public hearing was held, and we got that approval of 5-0. And then we also have on here the, can't see it in Zoom, but the last official city planning meeting where we started this conversation with you all. And then again, here tonight, which is where we're at. See, it's been a long journey. So this isn't the last step on our process either to get this, the land swap finalized. So this is the next set of steps that we would need to be going through. So if we get approval tonight, then we unlock the next step where you have to work with the county. So the county application is due next week, December 20. And then once that is submitted, then the county planning commission will be doing a review of those applications, including ours. They'll do their own vetting for which ones to move forward to the county commissioners, who will review it. Their staff will work with other official organizations to fill in gaps, do any other kind of land studies, things like that. From there, the county level planning commission will have a public hearing, and they'll make a recommendation to the county commissioners. Right? So you all are probably very familiar with this. So underneath this, so underneath here on the end, we have the expected approval. We would expect that the county would recommend it, and the county commissioners would approve it. If for some reason they decided not to go with the recommendation of approval, at the bottom here, I have it shown steps basically for what they would do. So they would have to have another public hearing for the county commissioners to get feedback, and then make a decision based on it. So kind of talk through what our project is about and what our personal motivation is. As Bonnie mentioned, we love Cheney. We're big fans of Cheney. Our group would like to stay in Cheney. We want to build a community here, and we want it to be here. The people who are in our organization right now, we live here currently. We want to live here. We went to school here. I'm an Eastern grad, Eastern grad. And Bonnie's whole family has grown up here. She raised kids here. Her kids raised kids here. We want to continue to stay here. That's really what it is. We love Cheney, right? We also believe that this specific land parcel is a big win-win. This specific location is a win-win for both us and for the city of Cheney. So it's currently right next to the existing boundary line. As mentioned, you can see on the map, we have the red line is the existing boundary, and then the nice yellow box is our property. Zoomed in from the other maps that we've seen so far tonight. And this is, you know, in line north, which is what the city would like to do or test out. And from our perspective, it's right across the street, well, from both perspectives, right across the street from existing utilities like sewer and water, which makes it very easy to connect into. And then just from an, for like development purposes and move-in purposes for folks who will live on this land, it's real close to vital services, shopping, Safeway, Starbucks, you know, the important necessities in life. So as mentioned with the next steps slide, time is really critical for us to, we're very ambitious to get this project moving. We're very excited about it. We want to get it moving. And the current next deadline is, like I said, next week. It's on Tuesday for 20, right around the corner. And we really would like to hit this deadline until the week gets moving because we have a lot of more steps to go through. And it's going to take time. And the faster we can get to each of these steps, the faster we'll bring in some new energy into this land and bring in some new focus to Cheney to help kind of, you know. If we do miss this deadline, there is a potential delay for our project and for all of this, like three to five years. And so that would be really unfortunate. Okay. So at the last meeting with y'all here, there were some concerns that came up, and we just wanted to take the opportunity to address some of those. The first one here is the shrub designation. So there was concern that our land might be designated up to like 40% shrub steps. And we talked to some folks, and while we haven't done the official study, the expectation is that that is not going to be the case. I also have included a nice photo. I had to look up what shrub step was. I don't know if you all know what that is. But this is the photo of it here. It looks like sagebrush to me, honestly. And so in the picture of our land, which looks like grass, and so it's very pasture-like. It looks very different. And so, again, the expectation is that it's not going to be a concern. Another concern that came up was the railroad cropping on Paradise that runs along 904. So there's concern that the extra traffic from our development might add some increased risk to that area. And so they did, the traffic study came back late last week. I believe you all saw a copy of the result of it. And it shows that there should be no, there would be no significant impact from our development on the risk of the, with the railroad. And I have the study. I was going to read the final, to the chase, the conclusion here. Just read it verbatim. So this study concludes, "The proposed 10-acre UGA swap from the southern urban reserve to the Paradise Park LLC site can occur without unacceptably impacting the city so far as mitigating conclusions above are noted. Overall, this UGA swap has no impact on the city as trips are essentially being transferred from one area of Cheney to the other." So I don't believe that's going to be a concern either, thanks to... Concern around cost to taxpayers came up last time, around whether or not, you know, we're building new development. Everyone thinks development and family housing. You think lots of roads to get to all these different homes. However, our development is going to be a little bit different, and we're going to actually not have roads within our plot. And so that's part of the cool design that we're going to be building. And so as such... And so as such, we believe that the cost for supporting our location and our development is going to be lower to the city. So the roads and maintaining roads is one of the more expensive costs to the city, right? And so this will actually have a lower impact on that side, but you will still have family housing. It'll be bringing in the tax dollars. So it should be not a concern on that front either. And you can see, I have a design. The image here is example of the type of community that we're looking to build where we have. But what looks kind of like roads, actually walking paths. So there'll be parking and then walking paths to all the different homes. The actual roads will just be on the outside. One of the other concerns that came up briefly last time was a tip, so a tax increment financing. And I do have a definition here, and it's in the printout of the slide, if you want to read it, it's long. But basically, if this is not something that applies to us, there's no tip that's been discussed with the city or with us or anything like that, so it's really not a questionable concern. Another one that came up was spot zone, whether or not the spot zone change. And this is also basically not applicable at all because the, our parcels are next to the existing boundary, and so it's not like we're plucking it out of nowhere to be included within the UGA. It would just be an extension. The definition doesn't match. There was a concern around whether or not this would be setting up a precedent, if this land swap got approved, if that would open like a floodgate of other land swap ideas, you know, for better or worse. And we just wanted to like reiterate that the city does have, obviously, you all know, the city has full discussion over the UGA, so something, people did come and they were trying to do spot zone changes or something weird. You have full discussion over whether or not you would want to include that or approve it, right? So, and as stated already tonight, this land swap is a like-for-like swap to move it from the south, where we're not really getting a lot of development because of lots of reasons, to moving north, which is the direction we want to move more. That's where the growth area is. And then kind of along the same lines, you know, comprehensive plan, new growth plan has come up, and approving this land swap wouldn't, would not change or impact the city's ability to do a comprehensive plan. This one would just really be a temporary solution while waiting for the comprehensive plan to help deal with the family housing shortage in Cheney. Okay. So to kind of a quick vision, if folks are interested in what we're trying to build, kind of hinted at it, Bonnie talked about it a little bit, but the thing that we're trying to build on this land, right, that doesn't have a lot of roads, is what's called co-housing. So this is an intentionally built neighborhood designed with the purpose of connecting with your neighbors. So we're going to be building, we literally will be building a community. So we're building it. We want to live here. We want to be part of this area. The design of the development will basically be private family housing, but it will also have shared spaces, like a clubhouse, shops, garages, gardens. Definitely going to happen. And then we're also very environmentally friendly, and so we're going to keep environmental sustainability in mind as we design out what this is going to look like. So we have a next photo. This is a very similar setup, so this common eating areas and spaces for folks to gather and mingle. And so with that, I'm going to pass it back to Bonnie to kind of wrap things up, and then we can answer some questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Becca. So in closing, I just want to say that for all of these reasons that Becca has just presented, that we strongly believe that this will be a win-win for both the city of Cheney and for us. Our development is focused on strengthening our community and generating positive press for Cheney as we market our development to prospective homeowners interested in a safe, multi-generational neighborhood like the one that many of us grew up in years ago. You can tell by my hair color that time is of the essence for me, at least, and also for some of the people who are in our group. And we respectfully ask that you accept the planning commission's recommendation to move the land exchange forward for county approval in the knowledge that a project like ours has many benefits, and we believe few if any risks. We, on the other hand, don't have the luxury of losing yet another two to three years in the hopes that we will be able to bring this development to Cheney. Please, folks, send this land exchange forward with a yes vote tonight so that it can make this year's deadline of December twentieth, and that we can be on track to break ground in twenty twenty-four and provide twenty to thirty family homes for Cheney. Thank you. And then if you have any other questions you'd like to ask.
Welcome to the council.
I got a quick question, kind of based off of what you just said. So you said twenty to thirty. I mean, ideally, what's your kind of number that you really like to see?
We'd like to see between twenty-five and thirty homes. Yeah, they will be, as the picture showed, and kind of as this picture shows, with open space in the middle. They're usually designed with kitchens or rooms that are heavily utilized so that your view is up the middle. It creates a nice space, safe space for children and.
Yeah, so your example has eight in it, so would it kind of be like little areas of, you know, six to eight kind of thing, or would it be one large, one like twenty-five?
As soon as we get the green light, we're hiring an architect. In fact, we're in touch with one right now. And then we will not only be doing a design based on all the input, but we also plan to hold a meeting with the neighborhood that they can come and give their comments and also some concerns that they might have that we will take into consideration when we design it. But yes, it could very much be some, like a major green space in the middle with sort of pods that go around, or it could be more like this, only we have ten acres, so we could have easily more homes than that. That would be facing either in more of a circle, or it could either, we've seen ones that have done really nice in a courtyard that are more of a square.
Yeah. I don't, yeah, I don't mean to get kind of the weeds here, so kind of relevant to what's happening right now with the snow and everything. So would this be an HOA kind of a area?
Yeah.
Because someone would have to take care of it.
Yeah, absolutely. And the idea with parking being on the side also, that particular parcel is next to a storage unit that's with the Jehovah's Witness Church. We thought that would be the best place for parking because it wouldn't be an eyesore to any of the neighbors that are already existing. We planned, we planned things like a garden and orchard, things that would create a nice buffer, kind of a nice transition actually from more density, but also in a rural character. Anybody else?
Thanks, Bonnie.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Your honor.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Your honor, may I say something, please?
Did you want to address that letter?
I did want to address the letter. So first off, I'm going to address the letter. I received the letter. I'm acknowledging receipt by Bonnie Mager and family to request that I recuse myself because of a conflict of interest. I had the discussion with legal staff prior to the last meeting, and I just want to clear the air that I do not have a conflict of interest, and I will be participating in this deliberation. And furthermore, I just want to clarify that in her, in your letter, Bonnie, trying to recuse myself, you brought up Black Hawk Ridge and why I recuse myself. It made, you asked why I recuse myself in that, and I want to clarify that. I work for an engineering firm, and one of my colleagues was hired by, I think it's Tom Sterling Centaur to work for the developer. And that posed a conflict of interest for me in case they came and tried to hire me as a biologist. Therefore, legal staff advised me to stay, recuse myself from Black Hawk Ridge, which I did. In this case, Bill White is a transportation consultant. He works for TO engineers. I work for TO engineers. We've just got acquired, so our name will actually be O'Durra come January one. And the reality is, I read the traffic report on Sunday when it was in the council packet. I had nothing to do with the scope or scale of the traffic report. I had no influence on that traffic report. And as your presentation noted, you find the transportation port to be favorable. So I can assure you that I have no conflict of interest and no influence in how that transportation port was written. And lastly, I just want to make sure that it's very clear that Bill White, who's the transportation on-call consultant for the city of Cheney, came from MMI, and he was selected prior to myself being on council. And he's since transitioned from MOI to TO engineers, which is an O'Durra company now. So again, just to clarify for the record, I don't see myself as having a conflict of interest. For what it's worth, I appreciate you addressing most of my concerns because some of those concerns that were brought up in your slideshow, I obviously made that notion. So again, at this point, I just want to make sure that I'm clearing the air, and I will be participating in this deliberation. Thank you.
Makes sense. Hey, Paul, go ahead.
I had a couple of questions. Todd, if you could. We've had this item in front of the public works committee a couple of times. I'm still not clear about swapping and all that. It's kind of a, first heard it was through legal action, of course. Both management act being what it is, and anyhow, just a couple of quick questions. So the water sewer are extended on Normal Park Road?
They are. When you have, but they're extended out, they're not on Normal Park Road. They're actually on Meadow Glen Lane, Meadow Glen as part of the development there.
Okay.
And so Meadow Glen Lane and Paradise Road is an intersection, and that developer actually put the improvements in the middle of Paradise Road, and we have water and sewer in that area. They also did their side of the improvements of sidewalk curbs and street.
So we have eight-inch water?
Yes, I believe it's eight-inch water.
So we, in the event this would go through, that would get extended? We don't need to upsize yet, or?
You know, like I say, like the UGA, it's always an unknown what you want to be developed out there. We just don't know.
So we have the utilities. And the second one then is, Normal Park Road runs north and south in Paradise, east and west, and currently, we don't have jurisdiction over either of those?
No. Normal Park Road is the north-south, and we have, in the city limits is the east side and in Spokane, on the west side, Spokane County. Paradise is county, and here again, the exact opposite in the south is City of Cheney, and the north is Spokane County.
So our boundary rests on the, would be the south side of Paradise Road, which is the north side of the property line is the north side?
Correct.
Then on Normal Park, is it the city limit on the east side of Normal Park Road, or are we in the middle of the right-of-way?
I believe we take in all of that right-of-way. That, it's only a, I believe it's a thirty-five foot right-of-way, and we own that whole room.
So as, and then I did read the traffic impact analysis. The, for me, and as we spoke at the public works committee, I'm more interested in what is the, really, the fiscal impact to the city in the event it goes forward, in that I'm still not sure from everything I see, ignoring the county, and we dealt with annexations in the past, you know, this is just an urban growth area swap thing. Eventually, if everything goes through, there would be a petition for annexation. And again, as the county goes, they like to hand off as much roadway as they can, get it off their books and onto ours. And I still have not, I guess, still have questions on how we go about paying for all that, because under our current standards, they would only be required to improve half of Paradise Road. And then we'd pay a little bit extra for that. If the county, and we won't know this until we get into that, how much, generally, they'd give us Paradise from Normal Park to SR nine oh four is what I figure would happen. In a small development like this, I don't know how, we can't compel them to do more than what our standards are, so we're, how do we improve the rest of Paradise Road as we get into this? And I can't imagine us wanting to annex church property. I mean, that does nothing as far as, as a fiscal analysis, that's a negative. So that was the one question I had on, and I know Todd and I talked, there's a, if you get deep into this, you know, whether we would look at putting in a request to functionally classify Paradise Road and Normal Park Road. And that's a possibility, but that's quite a ways down the road. But we're talking some significant costs here. I understand with the transition impact analysis, it may look benign, but the one conclusion they had is that, and they're quoting from the, their conclusion is, mobility safety improvements will be necessary for SR nine oh four Paradise Road intersection. And what I saw from the analysis, probably the least costly would be right in, right out type. I know it was discussed in the analysis that you could close it all together, but I think we'd have some visitors from the neighborhood join us for that meeting. So I think it's not benign that something has to happen, but it might not be a bad thing to have right in, right out, because left turn on that is getting more and more dicey as the traffic count increases on nine oh four. It is dangerous. So that, appreciate that, Todd. I guess I did more talking than you, but you're good. Brett, I had a question, if I could bother you as well. Now, when we had, at the committee meetings, we put you through your paces. I appreciate your patience. I still don't know how in the heck this swap thing works, but fundamentally, we got the two sixty-eight on the south side of the tracks. And in your community impact analysis, in a number of places, you mentioned either that that is not the best place for an urban growth area for us, and it sat idle for twenty-plus years.
Correct.
And I appreciate that. Now, given what we're proposing tonight, slicing off ten small acres down there and swapping them up here, what's the long-term, how do we see this going forward? I mean, it's kind of hard to look in the crystal ball dealing with the county on this, but is that two hundred and sixty-eight, which could be then two fifty-eight, someone wants to have another, you know, an UGA expansion on the north of forty, because is this our bank now that we can just swap, use that for swapping out as things come forward? How do you see this?
As a short-term fix, yes. As a long-term fix, we really do need to have a longer discussion about the length, delay quantity analysis, and really figure out what the next twenty-year horizon is for Cheney, and where do we want to be? Do we want to pull more of that out for the south and have a larger discussion on where we want to be for urban growth areas, whether we want some stuff on Washington or off of that, or O N X, have those longer-term discussions. We do need to have that. And we will be headed to our conference and plan update cycle in twenty twenty-four, so we are talking about maybe doing a length quantity analysis in twenty twenty-three to kind of set the stage for that for a long-term fix. I don't see on the horizon any more applications for a little ten acres here, ten acres there, but we do need to have a long-term comprehensive discussion.
I appreciate that. Now, when you talk about a long-term discussion, what I'm still confused about is, can a one property owner that's currently in UGA object to us moving them out of an urban growth area, and that holds us, I guess, to their wishes, or how does that work?
Can I interject something here?
Yeah.
It's my understanding that there was a, some stakeholder meeting a while.
It's my understanding that there was a, some stakeholder meeting a while back and I don't know who all was there, but the property owner to the south offered up ten acres.
I'm talking about the next forty or, and a hundred.
Well, I don't think quite honestly, they, they're, it's my understanding that their opinion really doesn't matter, but it is nice. But in this case, this is the situation.
Well, that's my question.
Yes, but our UGA, it's not his UGA.
Is, is that how that works? Okay, that's good.
The county will be having, the county will have a public hearing on this, tell this time next year. And again, that'll be publicly noticed. Any property owners within the UGA will have a chance to show up to that meeting and say their piece. And the county commissioners will make a decision based upon that.
So there's a hearing even after the one we had? If this moves forward, they still have another hearing? You double up on hearings?
And this is all, this is again, tonight's really.
All right.
A thumbs up, a thumbs down? Do we make, do we go forward with an application to Spokane County for this, run this through the process of the county?
And I think the county requires either a resolution from the city or a letter of support.
That is correct.
So they're asking to accompany the application.
Yeah.
So it's totally subjective upon the commissioner's wishes and whatever.
They're going to respond to that on the application.
Always loved the Growth Management Act for that very reason. So, uh.
So did they.
Yeah, I mean, anyhow, I guess for me, you know, I chewed on this quite a bit still as just plezier and heck with regard to swapping and the legal stuff. But anyhow, for us, the city council, I'm not all that concerned about a growth area because it could be just like the other one. If, when we find out how much development costs, I think it's fit for another fifteen years. I don't know. But I will, I guess for me, to, when we have a discussion of a potential annexation petition, I'm not going to be in favor of an annexation that the city's still going to have to improve right-of-way in order to accommodate that. And, and, and in one of Brett's policy topics, we do kind of say in there that in policy topic nine, fiscal impacts, resources, resources that will be available to accommodate the additional development, which is anticipated within the UGA. So we're kind of committed that, you know, we don't have to, but I'm, I'm worried a little bit that, I just want to be very clear, I'm not going to be in favor of an annexation where the city is going to have to help pay for development, for improvement of Paradise Road and the intersection at nine oh four and Paradise Road. Because currently, we don't own the railroad, the Ad Gray Cross, and we don't own Paradise Road. We don't own the liability. Taking a step for a UGA and annexation potentially could, but we still have work to do on that. And I don't really have a problem with, I, I guess I'm kind of interested to see where this UGA swap thing goes. I mean, why do we have to wait a damn year? I don't know, but it would be interesting to see where that goes and to see what we can then use the plan for the future. It's really the only thing I'm interested in at this juncture. But I would go on the record as opposing annexation unless we have some means in which to, you have funds other than city funds for the improvements. Thank you, Your Honor.
Gotcha, thanks, Paul.
I have, Todd or Brett, either one, how many, how many more decision points, and maybe the middle council can help on this too, how many more decision points, let's say just move forward to the county. County goes through their process, they sell goods, then there's a, a number of decision points beyond that for us. How many different, different decision points then will we have in front of us before we say yes or no? I mean, because it's like multiple, we'll, we'll see a development, we'll, you know, just all that kind of.
Sure. I will give you my, my most, my, my most recent example is when we have the storage units right behind Maverick. That was in the UGA. We were appro- approached by the developer. He wanted to extend water and sewer into that place. He put it underneath the railroad tracks. He extended it. We had him sign a no protest agreement, which gave the council for approval for a no protest. And that no protest said, that you could annex that property at any time. So that property set, even with the utilities expanded in that property sets away, what we had to do is we had to work with the county to go through their building process. They held the building, they did the inspection, they did the review, but they also worked with us because we have the urban standard along Bets Road. So if you go out there, you see that they did improve West Bets Road along that, that portal. So we worked with that. And then after the, the, the building was in, I, I believe that we came back with a, a request to annex it into the city because of the, of the, and that's, that would be the, that would typically be the process. But we would still have to, during the development, we'd still have to engage with the county because whether, whether that development happens in the county and they, they tap into our utilities and then at such time that we wish to bring it in. And I think what Councilman Schmidt is saying, we would almost have to really tie into where the county is and where DOT is and even where the railroad is, which is owned by DOT itself. Now, whether that would be some type of annexation agreement or, or something that, that would, would have all parties on board and how to report on that.
So, but we have many decision points at which we could go, no, we want to do this.
Well, okay, another one would be they could, another scenario, they, they pull it in, they grab the utilities and then request for you to come into the city. Once they're in the city, then we would take over the committee, we would take over the development view. But as, right now, they, they did not annex into the city and tap into our utilities, sign the no protest agreement and, and move forward on that, that would be in the county. But typically, the county would, would kind of work with us just because it is in the UGA.
And, um, so we're doing the land quality analysis. We're going to do a whole.
Yeah.
That's part of our plans next year?
Yeah, I really think it's time. I mean, as I mentioned, the budget, when I, when I was out driving around, I, I believe we have four plus housing lots available. We have more that is in a final plat, but we're waiting for construction approval. We also have one that I believe has construction approval. We're just waiting for the owner to submit a final plat. But, but we do have a, more or less, a housing shortage. And, and now we have to kind of figure that out, whether we talk about a land quality analysis, what we can do with infill, is there, is there too much other land uses that's sat out there for twenty-plus years that's not being really developed? Taking a look at that, I think that's going to be what Brett's saying, a discussion through that land quality analysis and where, where really growth is happening. And you take a look from, you know, from nineteen ninety-five, when I first came on, I mean, we, we had one of the largest growths around. We had three large developments. We had Paradise or the Orchard, what they call it. We had pretty much the, the other development, Bethany, in Bethany Way.
Golden Hills.
And we had Golden, yeah, Golden Hills. And right now, you know, we sit in twenty twenty-two and now we're just final plating Golden Hill six. So over that twenty-plus years, three hundred and sixty houses kind of came in. I mean, we're not a, a huge city that, that goes growth, but if you take that average, that average is about twenty houses a year. One of our largest growths happened back in two thousand and nineteen in the Harvest Club where we did receive fifty-three single-family houses to, to go. So I have a few in sight. We do have some developers wanting to start plating it and moving forward. But I think when you take an average of twenty and a potential of fifty, we don't have that large of housing development in one area. So.
And then can, can we go back to the map that shows?
Okay.
General boundaries.
Let me see if I can.
So where, I, I'm helping out. Where is the Scrubs property?
So the, the Scrubs property basically has eleven acres up here and I believe he has another, some acres up there.
Okay.
We're, we're.
And he, that individual is interested in coming into the city?
He is. And here's where we're running in, into the, the planning process. With, with, when we take a look at land that we, we're potentially into the UGA, county has, has some limitations on ag land and what that definition is.
Okay.
Until we have a, a strong definition of, of certain ag land that we should or should not be annexing, I think that they would never make a decision on that.
But that's why they took that, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, obviously, we wanted to have a, we wanted to have a strong application if we're going to move forward, if we're going to have a lot of effort in it, we want a good application. But when this came as a concern, I think it didn't come from so much the county, but it did come from the Department of Commerce because we did start working with the Department of Commerce as well. Brett was answering a lot of questions. So those are the things that the, the, the county really needs to kind of do or address this issue on their own to see what their quantity analysis or definition is on that. So as you, as you take a look at all this area around here, most of this is ag, but the growth all around here is that you take a look at every industry in here, that is where our water and sewer is going. And that is where we infill over the past twenty years is here, here, right around here, Golden Hills out and this whole area. So we're reaching kind of max density in, in this area with nowhere to go. But if we're limited to ag around here, then we have to take a look at infill. We have to take maybe a look at, at maybe around this area that is, that is not considered ag. I believe West Bets is still in, in ag. So yeah, like Brett said, this is going to have to be some discussions where we're going to, you know, have to at least be asking a lot of questions, what would qualify for urban growth in that.
Can I help you understand something?
Thanks, Chris. Close the other thing, Ben. Question, comments?
Your Honor, if nobody else is going to go, I, I realize Paul and Ryan, you weren't here, so I'll probably recap a couple of things that were stated at the last council meeting. My, my concerns with this is it's, it's a very short-term, very short-term fix. I, I believe we need to take a step back and take a, you know, we're, we're doing a land quality analysis, really figure out what we have for infill potential and where we can go. And, and again, I, I truly believe we owe it to our ratepayers and our taxpayers to come up with an urban growth boundary that is compact. It's, it's not sprawling. You know, when I, when I think about the UGA and, and where we can go in twenty years, you know, this, this, it, it isn't a sprint around the block, it's a marathon. I mean, we, we have to take a step back and really consider it. What, what really concerns me, and again, first time I read it was this Sunday, in the traffic analysis. I mean, we, we all know that, who read the, the report, that the intersection of Paradise and nine oh four, it's a level F intersection.
It's the, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
A level F? F is in Frank, level service. Level of service.
And what does that, tell me what that means?
So in, in terms of level of service, they, they rate intersections two different ways, whether they're signalized or unsignalized. Obviously, this is unsignalized, but it's on a scale of A to F, F being the lowest, A being the best. Example of an A is the intersection, I believe, right by Halliday and Safeway. That's, that's, that's a level A intersection. What I took out of that analysis is that there would be, it's, it's already a level F and that's, it is what it is. And if we add more volume to it, there's a likelihood that the queuing is going to quadruple times four and the accident potential is going to double, nearly double. And if, again, if you look at, you look at the last statement that was, that was read by Rebecca, that there's no significant impacts if there's mitigation measures. Well, section two point four of that report has five levels of mitigation measures. And the ones that concern me are three through five. And obviously, four and five are almost unattainable in terms of a, a financial cost and a hardship to our citizens. And that's, you know, it, it, again, if you look at that, and the third option is closing it all together. So I, that's, that's what I struggle with. The other thing I really struggle with this is the fact that most of the roads that service this are half-roads. And what I mean by that, they're half in the city, half in the county. It's, it's tough to structure future development when we don't have that control. It's, it's not in the city. It's, it's something that I think that needs to get worked out. Another takeaway I had, and I, and I mentioned this last time, is when we first started this process, and again, it went to the Public Works Committee meeting at least twice, we, we looked at a much larger scale. And, and again, at a larger scale, you, you can get some efficiencies from utilities, transportation, public services, public safety EMS, response time and so forth. But what really struck me is I, I was shocked, very shocked, that a lot of the folks that flank the northeast and the northwest, they weren't very interested in participating in the Cheney, in the City of Cheney and becoming in the UGA. And I just feel like we, we kind of dropped the ball on the communication standpoint. And, and then we kind of ended up at this point where now we're at a, a ten-acre swap, let's, let's try it and see if it works. And I, I just, again, working as a consultant, I, I appreciate the planning piece and I appreciate looking at the bigger scale. And again, this is where I struggle with this one. I, I think about the fiscal impact to our residents and our taxpayers. And in fact, I mean, the last couple of council meetings, we've been talking about rates. Rates are going up and they're going up significantly. I just, I, I have a, I have a hard, I have heartburn, I guess, if you were to say, to, to feel like we're, we're kind of subsidizing a potential development up there that I'm struggling to see how it's going to pay for itself. And it's, to me, it's, it's a case in point of urban sprawl. It really is. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Mark, Stan, Ryan, I think.
Is it, is it correct to say, going back to these decision points, the correct to say, if we can, if we cut this to the county and we proceed it and along, we're not going to have answers to these things that are, that are being discussed and being, you know, concerns are being brought up. We're not going to have any of those answers unless we do it. So it's kind of a catch-22. We're putting the developer, the, these people who want to live in our community, who want to be part of us, who've lived here, invested in the community, had businesses, raised families, cannot find another piece of property in town, in our current setup where they can buy because they did try, approached people and could not find something that would work. And I just feel we should allow the, the process to continue because we can always say no. They can build it, potentially just only hook up to our water and sewer, not ever come in, but still be a part of our community. And over the years, that's where houses are going to go. Even those people who live in the little open spot, who are, I don't know what ages they are, but I can imagine some of them are my age. And when I die, when they die, when they pass away and their children decide to do with that property and they've got five or ten acres or whatever in that area, why that's, that's some generational money if they sell it to a developer and build homes in there. So over time, things change and living in, I don't even live all the way to the. And living in, I don't even live all the way to the south of town. And it used to take me a third of my commute time to get from my house to Bets and 904. And two thirds of the rest away, uh, two thirds of my time, the rest away. People are going to want to live on the north side of Cheney because you can get in and out. We would, we have spent decades trying to ensure that we have a downtown. But, and, and I, I support that. But commerce has moved to the north side of town. So it is only, it only makes sense that that is going to be, over time, where we're headed. And this, uh, this parcel, if it's, if it's allowed to develop, and whether it's in the county or in the city, I believe eventually will be part of our community because that's the way we're growing. Just, you know, infill is a, a fine thing, but not everybody wants to live on Second Street. And you can see that, and you know, I go back to, I made a fairly strong statement last year when the folks across the street from me to the west wanted to downzone their property to not allow infill. And I made a very strong statement about why that was wrong and that infill is important to our community. It's not that I'm not in favor of it, but this kind of housing, this, this concept isn't going to fit in infill. I don't know if you saw the Inlander recently, they had, I think the last Inlander had a really nice article about cohousing development that was done up in the Perry Street District. And it was the very first one in Washington State. It's a, it's a very distinct type of a housing where people with a great sense of community want to come and live in a, in a shared space and, and share so that they aren't using as many resources to, you know, like the roads and the, you know, they're not, they're not using as many resources to, um, to live in the space that they've chosen to live. And, you know, it would be, people, people are coming all around, from all around the country to look at things like the, the development in, in Perry District. And I can't even imagine that, why we would not want to have some interesting opportunity like this in our community that we can point to and say, you know, we have, we are special. We have this, we have this place where people can live in a kind of a little, I hate to use the word commune because I'm 60. But in a communal environment where we share and take care of each other. And, you know, I, 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 I just can't imagine. And certainly, the, the, you know, you, I appreciate your concerns about the cost, but they're all very vague. There is no specific that has been identified as a cost yet for us to. So proceeding with the application does not cost us a penny. And possibly, we need to let this play out so people in our community have houses to live in.
I just asked, that's Todd, if you don't mind, she brought up a point about costs. Can you give us a ballpark cost on North Six and Bets? I mean, you've seen some cost opinions about the roundabout there, right?
Roundabout?
Yeah, can you just give a very high level, and this is, you know, in terms of the fixes and the mitigation sequence that's in that traffic study, this is level four, right? Would be like a roundabout. But can, can you just give that cost implication and make that?
Sure, um, obviously, we didn't, um, you know, we, we don't have a traffic impact fee for, for that, for that area. Those are the costs. And the cost, I think we had, was awarded $935,000 CIP grant.
Well, there were, there were people who've been talking about the need for that roundabout for five or six years that I recall, and it, that was long before this ever came up. So I, I'd say that this development is what's driving the roundabout. I mean, there's problems there every day.
No, no, you're, you're missing my point. My point is, for that fix, that's also a level, a level of service app, I believe.
Yeah, if, if it is, if it's not now, it's projected to be, but yeah, I believe it is.
But my point is, we're talking, it's, it's a million dollar fix. Correct?
Yeah.
All right.
Oh, yeah, I still want to make some of your points up there.
My point is, it's a million bucks to, to fix that intersection. If, if we were looking to fix, I mean, if we want to adjust our CIP and fix Paradise and SR 904, and, and you're looking at one of those last two options, I mean, we're talking a million bucks minimum. And then if you're going for an overpass, multi-million dollars, right?
That is correct. Yeah, I mean, you, you're talking overpass, and, and so you're talking, um, you know, when we talk about level of service, uh, you know, I could point out anywhere from Cheney into Four Lakes, any intersection there could be a level of service app. It just depends on, on the safety, whether we establish turn lanes. We, we were the ones that actually wrote a grant for the safety improvements to get the center turn lane established and widened out. 904, um, and Bets, again, was a long one. We just don't go, go out and tell DOT what we want to do. DOT really takes control of their, of their, of their intersections to that end. So 904 and, and Bets Road was a long juncture because you did put a, you did put a rail line in through there. We had monies coming in, not only from grants, but from a DOT in the railroad as well. So when, when DOT recognizes that intersection as a, as a level of service app, depends on the development that comes in, they may want that development to pave themselves. Most recent would be pretty much the grocery outlet that went in. We didn't have any control of what, what those turning movements were. They were proposing that access. We worked with DOT to come up with the best solution. And they actually ended up working with a developer on design for what you see today. Not the most functionary or best design that I've seen. But until that becomes a need, whether we have a roundabout or a future traffic light in there, DOT is the one that takes control of the warrants and pretty much sets the stage on when they would want to pull that trigger.
Again, I, just to circle back, my, my point is, we're talking considerable costs for traffic improvements. And if, if that's where we want to focus for the city of Cheney, our traffic improvements, I, I don't know. I, I can't say that that's top of my list of Bets and SR 904, but it's, it's real cost. I think we have to take that into consideration. Todd, I'm curious, uh, I'm trying to think of one, if I've ever seen one, a roundabout on a train crossing.
On a train crossing? No, would we be?
Well, so I mean, you've got a train crossing, so if you've got a roundabout at the intersection, which means there's no actual drop downs or lights to tell people to stop, and they're backing up in the roundabout, you're backing up potentially on train tracks. So, I mean, how does, how does that?
You know, I've never really been experienced with the, how a train would act or how would they, I mean, you know, Bets and 904 was a challenge. You had a rail running, uh, not, you know, true perpendicular. It kind of ran through and it dissected Bets Road and then kind of went around to SR 904. There were several gates that needed to be put in place. The most challenging one was 904 gates because 904 is a five lane and trying to stop that. So there, there is some challenges to that end. I don't know if a roundabout would be the best solution in there. It may be, uh, you know, if, if it came to another lighted solution.
What's wrong with a right turn, right turn intersection there?
Yeah.
Not going to be a million dollars.
Here again.
Personally, personally, at that intersection, and that is a concern, but it should be that right now. That's a dangerous intersection right now. Everybody in Meadow Glen in that neighborhood could go right through there. So, you know, I think this is a, a unique idea, Cheney. There's nothing like it in Cheney. I think it's a great idea. And you have 10 acres that's never going to get developed down the south end of the town. I think we should go ahead with it, personally.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll jump in. I have to say, I share Paul's concerns, like share Vince's concerns. I drove over there yesterday, I've been on that road a lot. I go through Paradise Road, I back over there, and trying to get onto 904 is almost impossible right now. And you've got traffic coming through at 55 miles an hour. And right turn might be a little bit easier. Making a left turn off Paradise is basically impossible. You're going to sit there for a long time. It's dangerous. We add 50 homes in there and at what cost to make improvements to these roads where this becomes safer.
25 to 30.
For, for, please don't interrupt me.
All right.
And it doesn't, it doesn't pan out to me. I go back to what Vince said, taking 10 acres today and moving 10 acres here is not looking at the entire picture for this city. I don't think it's benefiting our citizens for a project this size. I love the idea, the development, I love the idea. I don't think this is the right process to go through. If it was, if we had other land that this was coming into and it was a larger portion, it would make sense. I think we need to go back, take a step back, look at, wait for the land quality analysis to happen next year, which we really desperately need. And you guys know, I was on the growth management board for many, many years. We need to have that done. And that makes a whole lot more sense than pushing something through that we don't know what's going to happen in the future. We don't know what the costs are going to be, and we do know it's dangerous. We do know, according to this, it is a level F intersection. And you're going to have people coming back through the neighborhood, making the round to come back onto Bets rather than to go onto 904 and Paradise Road. So that's just going to impact those, that development right there behind Holiday Inn Express. So in my opinion, um, I'm sorry, I think it sets a bad precedent, moving 10 acres. At this time, I think we need to, to do the land use studies and, and just take a step back. That's my opinion.
Thanks, Jeff. There's nothing else?
Can the proponent comment on a couple of things that were said that aren't really accurate?
No, I think we've had enough discussion. I'd like to call for a vote.
What was the discussion?
I think they had some points to make that were possibly, there was some additional information, people had asked questions and.
Well, I got a call for a vote, so. Anybody want to hear any discussion from the applicant?
I personally have a hearing.
Just a couple of things. One is that if we were to hook up to your city of water, it would be at 150%, not just 100%. So the development would not, would be actually adding to, we wouldn't be, um, being subsidized by this. The other thing is, and, um, I can't find it right now because I could be listening to you, but as I recall, when I read the traffic study, the analysis said that the projection for 2040 was that all three of those looked at intersections, Six and Bets, the traffic light and Paradise, would be projected to fail. And that our development would not have, would not add to that. That whether or not that development goes in, those different intersections will fail in 2040 if the projections are correct. So that's why I believe that, um, you know, basically said that there's no impact from us on, on those. And the other thing that I would say, as having been a county commissioner, and as you may or probably know, that if you are going to put anything like a roundabout or any substantial kind of improvement, there are many, many grants out there because the city this size of Cheney, no matter what you do, are not going to be able to afford those kinds of improvements without getting grants from the state. This seems to be a really good time to be able to do that with some of the money that's coming from Washington right now. So anyway, I just wanted to clear that. Thank you.
Want to add on to that, kind of clarify, so like the cost that was mentioned with all the improvements on those intersections, regardless of your decision tonight, those costs have to be paid for. So it doesn't actually make a difference on needing to fix those intersections by 2040 or whatever the timeframe is. So just to kind of reiterate that point.
Any final thoughts before we take a vote? What's your pleasure? Motion?
Your Honor, for the sake of putting it on the table, I would move for approval. Uh, I'm not sure how it's stated.
That's resolution.
I'm sorry.
Resolution F-09.
I would move for approval of resolution F-09.
Okay. Now a motion, another second. Okay, another second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Four to three, ayes have it. Resolution F-092, did I get that right? Did you have it? Four to three. Resolution F-092 passes. Thank you very much. Good discussion. Okay, let's move on. We've got several resolutions ahead of us. Resolution F-093, our 2023 line clearance contract renewal.
Steve.
Come on up.
Evening, Mayor, evening, Council. This is a request to renew for the third year contract with Asflint Line Clearance Company. It's actually Asflint Tree Experts. The initial contract was February 2020 for one year, and then we had three one-year options to renew. This would be the third option of renewal. If we do that, then at the end of this year, I'll offer an RFP to continue the line clearance program. It was budgeted for $60,000 each year, and it's budgeted for 2023 for this. Asflint's been doing a great job doing line clearance. One thing we're missing is the rate schedule. They're negotiating with their union on their current rates and getting the LNI prevailing wage rate. Once we have that, they'll submit me a rate schedule that has to be approved by the mayor. So that'll be the next activity that will come here, probably February, March area, probably maybe even a little bit later. So having said that, I'm recommending approval for the budgeted $60,000, continue the program. Are there any questions?
Mayor, we just got this in Public Works, and I would move for approval of resolution F-093.
Second. Thank you. Motion, a second, to approve resolution F-093, our 2023 line clearance contract renewal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Steve. Resolution F-092 passes. Steve, you're still up with, uh, resolution F-094, that's the AMI meter purchase for 2023.
Okay, this is another budget item for 2023. If you recall, with the Tannellis AMI, the advanced meter, metering infrastructure, we're buying smart meters at one pallet a month. It's 120 meters per pallet or $1,440 in a year. I have to do a separate purchase order, so each year I'll come back and request the same. We're purchasing them through GenPac. They're the only ones that have proprietary software from Tannellis in them. So it's a sole, sole source provider. We bought $1,440 this year, and I'm requesting another $1,440 next year, a budget at $320,000 and a 2023 budget. So.
Um, so, once again, I'm recommending the approval to allow me to buy fourteen or forty meters next year to continue the deployment of the system. And are there any questions?
Thanks, Steve. Any questions for Steve?
Kind of a quick question, is that kind of, you guys put all those in every year, or like some of those backups? Well, there's six thousand we have to replace.
Yeah.
So, fourteen forty a year for the next four years. Uh, we currently have installed somewhere around eight hundred, eight hundred and twenty, and I probably have five hundred in where, in our garage right now.
Yeah.
And we'll deploy those through the winter, but each month we'll get another hundred and twenty. We do have some on reserve, we have pallets in there, because we haven't, um, installed them yet. But, uh, when we finish the last order, I'll figure out how much we need in reserve to make that final last order. So after the fourth year, the fifth year, probably, uh, come up with an order of a hundred or so. And then, we'll probably get on a schedule, we'll give X amount per year, I, I don't know what that rate is, so I just...
So I guess, kind of my question is, say, instead of replacing, because they need to be replaced versus they failed and need to be replaced, do we, do we keep like a percentage just in reserve so that, um, in case the manufacturer can't fill our order, we're not left with nothing when something fails?
Well, we currently do that now.
Okay.
Yeah. Where we, we do have a ready reserve for those that fail. Meters usually have a life, a long life cycle. Uh, the reason to replace them, these have a receiver transmitter that can talk to each other, so, um, good thing is, the meters we have out there, none of them are failing. Um, they're, they're, they're really good, so that hasn't raised a concern, but we will keep a reserve.
Okay. Anything else?
No further questions, I make a motion to pass resolution F zero nine four.
Thank you, a motion a second to pass resolution F zero nine four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Resolution F zero nine four passes. Resolution F zero nine nine, this is for Chief Jenkins, East Region EMS Grant Service Agreement.
All right, hopefully this'll be quick and easy, so, the East Region EMS and Trauma Care Council sets a little bit of money aside every year for, for initiatives, and Battalion Chief Tim Steiner is your city fire marshal and oversees the Fire Prevention Division, uh, put in for a three thousand dollar grant, and was awarded that three thousand dollar grant from the East Region Trauma Council. So with that, uh, asking for you to authorize a mayor's entrance in the agreement so we can receive the three thousand dollars to go towards injury prevention for twenty twenty-three. Happy to, happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Steve. Any questions for Chief?
Your honor, I move for approval, resolution F zero nine nine.
Second? Thank you, a motion a second to approve resolution F zero nine nine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Chief. Resolution F zero nine nine passes. Resolution F one hundred, the chief purple pipe project supply and installation of aluminum covers contract award.
F one hundred. Let me, um, do a screen share here, I mean, I need to apologize for this. I was gonna give you an update, uh, you've been here kind of passing contracts and rewarding contracts, and what does all that mean? And, oh boy, I apologize, I know this is really small, so I'm gonna go ahead and just, uh... Yeah, here we go. I'll, I'll try to bump it up a little bit, let's see, here we go. I'll bump it down a little bit. Anyway, this is our famous spreadsheet, uh, that we work with, uh, kind of as, as a project, uh, that's, we use kind of the same spreadsheet as, um, when we, when you go visit legislation, uh, asking for more money. Uh, uh, basically, this top area right through here, this is a pre-construction task, mostly the, uh, engineering task, uh, we, we, we completed it in July of twenty twenty-one, but we go, went ahead and extended, uh, we did a NEPA process for that, uh, because if we, if we do the NEPA, we could tap into federal grants, uh, it seemed to pay for itself, we got five point four million, um, uh, in federal money towards this project. Um, you'll probably hear me refer to task one, two, three, and four. Task one is basically the final treatment system that will be housed at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, a couple of years back, uh, we went ahead and procured the ultraviolet, uh, system and also the filtration system, uh, to, uh, an amount of about one point nine million, one point nine six million, my pointer's right here, and I should be sharing this, shouldn't I? I'm sorry, I bet you're gonna get people in here to hear this. It's even gonna be smaller, and I apologize, I can just kinda be... Oh no, maybe, maybe it did all right, okay. Okay, so just kind of giving you an update of, of, uh, what we're looking at. My, my mouse is not working here, battery must be going low. Anyway, uh, one point nine six million, that was for the UV. Uh, just a little while ago, uh, you actually did it in a Calentra, uh, for a standby, a standby generator for six hundred and eight thousand. That generator, I believe, is five hundred and fifty days out, so we probably won't see that in twenty twenty-four. Um, and then, uh, tonight, oh, down below, that nine hundred and sixty-five thousand was earlier this year, that was for the complete task of, of two, and that's the MCC unit, that was for the material, uh, that was well over three hundred and some days, I think it's reaching pretty close to four hundred days when we received that. We should be receiving that sometime next year. Uh, the only additional expense is that we will be, uh, going out with electrician to install all those cabinets. I'm estimating about one fifty, two hundred thousand, that's, we have a little bit of savings in task two of about the one point four. Task one is what we're concentrated on tonight, tonight's two point four million is for, uh, three aluminum covers over our three existing clarifiers, we have three clarifiers that are sixty foot diameter, covering those up to, uh, for environmental, and the sun comes in, it grows the algae, it's more of a, as part of the treatment process to keep the water clean as we move it in through the, through the UV system. That's, the updates that I have is part of that. We haven't touched task three or four at this time, uh, the only thing that we're looking at, the only thing that we're looking at right now in task four is because we did get approval for the, um, we did get approval for the, uh, going underneath the UP and BNSF tracks, that we may go ahead and at least begin the bidding process to, uh, bore a carrier underneath there, so we're not held up, uh, when we start constructing the purple pipe. So, uh, I, I do believe this is all of the procurement process for task one, uh, probably in the next, uh, early next spring, I think February or March, uh, we will, we'll be going out to add for a building to house all this. So, I was gonna pull up, um, probably what these look like, you're probably curious. Any questions?
Any questions, uh?
Yeah.
Like, could you, your honor?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So what I, I'd ask, Mark, if you could, doing what you're doing here, so the, we don't have a, a mouth budgeted in, uh, agenda fine item, the two point six, is that falling? Uh, I mean, where's that in the realm of things?
Correct, yeah, we, we've, uh, we have eighteen million in grant money.
Right.
Uh, we have two million, uh, that we received, that two million went towards that, uh, one point nine million, and the reason why I, I should've put that budget amount in there, but we're probably not looking at this year, we may not be looking at it in twenty twenty-three when the actual expense comes in. Um, the two point four, if it does get here, uh, this year, then, uh, I'll probably work with city to, uh, a budget amendment in there to get that cost. But, out of the ten million, you can kind of see on that spreadsheet what we have, like I say, the UV and filters have been already purchased and paid for, we have control of that, the six hundred and eight, the two point four, and the nine six five, uh, we haven't even, uh, made an expense on that, we're just waiting for that to come in. So, total project, uh, eighteen million that we have in grants, we also have almost twenty-four million in BOE loans.
That's right. But again, this bid, it's not, we have an engineer's estimate.
Yes, we have, well, that is the engineer's estimate of, of ten thousand, the engineer's estimate, I, uh, believe is right around one point six, one point seven million for what we're talking about tonight.
It was.
Or a lot higher than.
Two or a million over.
Yeah, but we do have about, um, probably about four or five hundred thousand savings underneath. I think we had, I think she was estimating around nine hundred for the generator, ten minutes, six hundred. So, um, I'm, I'm more concerned about maybe the building, when that starts coming in, uh, you know, it, it costs a little bit more to, to build now.
Again, our gap is still right around five million?
Right around five million.
All right. Lastly?
What are we talking to legislators about?
Yeah. Good luck. Uh, how would, I mean, we talked in Public Works about this also, being a takeoff for roof for reservoir one, is there any, this, uh, gets us any closer?
Uh, it, it does, um, I have information I'd like to share at the Public Works.
Okay. Oh, we're gonna meet this week?
Why, it was open. I gotta hear.
All right, that's no more further questions.
Thanks, Paul. Any questions for Todd?
Uh, yeah, Todd, I have a question. Um, it looks like this bid opened on September seventh, is that correct? September seventh, correct, so less than a week.
Yep.
So we really don't have any evidence.
Uh...
Or do we have some evidence?
No, we, th- this was the only bid that we're, we're waiting on, and I, I believe how, how it reads is that they have, they have a certain amount of weeks to, um, go ahead and get the, get the procurement documents back to us, or the contract back to us, and then they have eight weeks to, uh, work with the manufacturer to get all the specs and, and order in, eight, eight weeks to order, thirty-two weeks out estimated on, uh, building of these domes. Uh, and then they, uh, will have the delivery in the domes within thirty-two weeks, and they're only gonna do one dome at a time, which they're estimating could take four to six weeks for each dome to install. So, that's what we're doing, is we're kind of lining up, uh, this as we go, as long as we're waiting, we waited, oh gosh, it's quite a while on the NEPA process, where, during the NEPA process, we can't turn any dirt, so we're kind of working above and procurement of these facilities, or these things that are, are good gear out. So that's kind of what we're doing. So, that's what you see, uh, what we've already, uh, what I'm asking tonight for is the two point four, award of that one, we already did the one point, uh, one point nine six for the UV, and we've already, uh, awarded the standby generator six hundred and eight thousand, and then we have already awarded nine hundred and sixty-five thousand for all of task two, with the exception of, I'll be bringing back something early next year, uh, a contract for the installation of them. And then the next one is going to be the big one, it will be the bidding of the actual building.
Right.
To complete task one. Uh, we don't wanna, uh, we're, we're kind of, the reason why we have these tasks is that we don't want to, uh, we wanna progress, and we wouldn't put the purple pipe in and never be able to finish, uh, the reused water. The whole idea is to be able to produce reused water through task one and two and portion of three, and be ready to go with the distribution. And that was kind of the, kind of the idea as we move along, knowing that it's gonna be probably twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six before we're even complete project, at best case scenario. I mean, if, if we get all the green lights and putting all that together, and that gives us more opportunity, if we do hit those high prices, if we do go above the engineer's estimate, uh, that we, we, uh, have a little bit more time to try to find more money. And I, I believe that, uh, that the, that the five point five million that we had in federal money, uh, there's a lot more reuse coming down, or, or that type of money coming down, uh, we just gotta be able to, to start looking for it in addition probably to what the state has.
Yes. I guess my concern is, because we've taken a bid such a short window of time, there might be somebody that can do this project, or like a lot, or something like that.
No, we, we actually bid out projects, uh, we had two, uh, two companies bid it, and one company did not. And, and I don't know, uh, the reason why, I did, I just think they were trying to, um, trying to see if, if they could actually, uh, put this together. Uh, the contractor, TML, has, has done these before, it's a very specialized, uh, type, um, thing, and it went, it went out, they advertised, it was open on the seventh, but it was, uh, out for quite a while before that. So it just opened on the seventh. It was advertised about three weeks or so. We, we even had a pre-bid meeting, uh, brought the two contractors that were, were interested in bidding it, uh, sat down, uh, went through pretty much the specs, went out and took a look at, and to field, um, review of it, to make them more confident.
Do you know how the delivery of products to the site is done?
Typically, what we're gonna do is, we're going to leave that to the contractor, because we don't really, again, we, we can store materials on-site and, and do that, but this is where the contractor will take control, he'll have to make sure that he orders the right specifications of the covers themselves, and then he will have it delivered, probably from the manufacturer, delivered on-site, he'll be there ready to take it off the trucks and start installing the clarifiers. Three clarifiers, not a lot of room around there, that's why we decided to take one clarifier every four to six weeks.
Right.
One clarifier.
This, this bid for a new council member was sticker shock. I hope they'll get used to this, but this is one of those that I, after I picked myself up off the floor, I wondered if we were flying products from box one via helicopter for one point two million dollars.
Yeah, well, the...
I wondered, what in the world is going on here? Um, so, let's buy our own semi truck and start saving a million dollars, or did we do from now on as a city, if, if we need a semi above it? That's, this looks like a government insanity to me. Um, I'm, but I, I don't know, this could just be new city council member sticker shock, um, that, um, I'll have to maybe get over or just work through somehow.
Chocolate help.
I don't know, a million dollar savings, I think it would help me, or you say neighbors to be helped? Uh, I could get, I would get it to save the city, a million dollars, that seems great.
Well, like Todd, though, this is, this is very specialized.
Right, yeah, yeah, specialized in my truck.
Okay, any other questions for Todd? Other comments, questions for Todd?
Your honor, I move for approval of resolution F, I think it's one hundred.
One hundred, yep.
Is that it?
Thank you.
Your honor, just a quick, yeah, hopefully if you don't mind, as a member of the consultant team, I'm just gonna abstain from F one hundred.
Okay.
Mark, it took a lot of beer cans, you know, to be recycled for this. That'd be more expensive, but for that...
I'm in, I'm really in favor of the purple pipe project, and I think it's great for us. I, I, what in the world are we talking about? Eighty-five thousand dollars to, to go attack and have a couple of shop drives, spend a fifty-three thousand dollars.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, uh, to approve resolution F one zero zero. Any final comments or questions for Todd? None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And no, and one extension there. Thanks, Todd. F one zero zero passes. F one zero one, the Bitco software agreement, amendment two, Todd.
Amendment two, yeah, we have this, uh, Bitco software since, uh, twenty thirteen, um, and we, we initially started it as our permitting software, um, then we moved into, uh, pretty much, um, our code enforcement software, and, uh, now we kind of house our civil, uh, software. And basically, all of our permits and code enforcement goes into this software, um, you know, throughout the years. And the reason why we do this software, it is, has a, uh, kind of a link to Spokane County assessors and, and working to that end, but it's come to the time where, uh, we are housing, uh, this software package, it's, it's pretty robust, it does have a lot of data, uh, and now, uh, the proposal tonight is to kind of shift it over, uh, more or less into, uh, a cloud base and make the software person pretty much more liable. I, I think it's pretty much a trend that we're looking at right now, uh, but with that cost, uh, it, it looks, it would be, uh, about an additional two thousand dollars annually. And, so, if there's a little bit more efficiencies on the cloud, a little bit less, uh, cumbersome in trying to, uh, update softwares and, and everything else. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Todd.
So we, we were hosting this on our servers before, oh, hey, yeah, it's good, get rid of it.
Any questions for Todd, amendment?
My question was what, what did that offer you to answer?
For approval of resolution, unless there's anything else, F one oh one?
Thank you. Got a motion and a second to approve resolution F one oh one, the Bitco software agreement amendment two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Todd. F one zero one is approved. Okay, F, uh, one zero two, the purchase and sales agreement, JRT Junior, JR, Soul Patch.
That is correct. Um, F one oh two was, uh, basically, uh, if you recall a while back, uh, we obtained a, a piece of property through, uh, non-payment attached. And we have this little corner lot and it was, um, right at the, the corner of, of Elman North, Elman Second. Uh, it, it does house a duplex. Uh, we own that corner. Uh, when it went through a resale, they discovered that it was our piece of property. We went ahead and, uh, did a record of survey, cut our existing alley out of there because we had some utilities running through there. Uh, we expensed about eighty-four hundred. Uh, that was kinda the direction would be to, um, go ahead and, and sell that back because we own part of a, of a structure on it. Uh, so the direction was to pay the cost for the purchase and sale agreement, which were right about the eighty-four hundred, uh, to that end. I do have one question. Is it typically on, on, on a transaction that the seller pays for the title insurance? I said I throw it out there. Typically, yes, that's what a seller does, but under this circumstance, you're asking me to pay more cost. So I'll leave that up to you, uh, but this is for the purchase and sale of that quarter lot. That piece of trend.
Perfect. Questions for Todd on this? Close this out. Anyone?
Uh, there's no questions. Let me make a motion, we pass resolution F one oh two.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion and second to approve resolution F one oh two with, do you add something to this to add the cost of title?
Just a question, if you, if you want us to go ahead and stick with the, say that we're, we're just, uh.
Paying all costs.
Yeah, we're, we're all costs, that, that the, the buyer asked and typically we would pay for a, the title insurance, but I'm asked, if you don't wanna do that, I will get back to the buyer.
Wouldn't leave it as it's written here, that wouldn't be so confusing.
Yeah, okay. So a motion and a second to approve resolution F one zero two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Todd. Resolution F one zero two passes. Don't go anywhere. Resolution F one zero three, T-Mobile lease agreement amendment two, Todd.
Yes, I've all, I looked up at this amendment and if you look at it online, for some reason it did not, uh, work out right. It goes from one to five, there must have been some editing in there.
I wonder, handing this out, can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Uh, it's lazy 'cause I don't wanna look through all this. I just am curious, when we no longer have a, an arrangement with T-Mobile or any of our carriers, do we have a, a requirement in our contracts that they have to take their equipment off our equipment?
Yeah, uh, T-Mobile, uh, I, I think in the agreement, um, that, yeah, we, we would ask them to remove it, uh, but we do have a right to the tower itself, if we choose, because it was just a lease agreement. So, because they made the investment there, but all of the antenna, everything would have to happen.
As long as they have to, if they're no longer gonna use them, that they have to go, that's not always clear.
So, uh, yeah, in, in your packet, I think it went from one, for some reason, two, three and four, it went right to five. There's some numbering systems, it must have been in the conversion. This is what we've seen. This is just amendment, uh, uh, very light amendment. Uh, we were, we were stuck on a three to four percent thereafter. Uh, they finally agreed to a four percent after time and that would take over January first of twenty twenty-five. I know it's down the road, uh, but they were, um, kinda exercising their three one-year options and needing to know what the position would be for the city in case they needed to relocate or remove their, their cell towers. So, um, that's pretty much it. Uh, everything is tied to the existing, um, contract to that end. I believe this is the second amendment, uh, for an additional, uh, fifteen years, believe it or not. That tower's been there a while. And that is for, uh, a land lease agreement off of North Ten and Oakland, uh, right by the reservoirs. That's not the Gulf of Fall, that is the other end.
Your honor, we discussed this at Public Works, four percent escalation is, I would say, in, industry standard, had moved to approve resolution F one oh three.
Thank you. Motion and second to approve resolution F one oh three, our T-Mobile lease amendment two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Todd. Resolution F one oh three passes. Steve, you're up again. Resolution F one oh four, twenty twenty-three transformer purchase price increase.
So what I'm requesting now is an appropriation increase of a hundred thousand dollars and, um, confirmation that the council still wants to purchase eighteen three-phase transformers. Call, back in the day, uh, the council appropriated one point five million to purchase a hundred and thirty-six transformers, but that was based upon the condition of prior to production, we confirmed the quantity, price and delivery date. In this instance, the eighteen three-phase pad mounts, they've gone up sixteen and a half percent due to cost of labor and materials. Therefore, the ninety thousand dollar increase, uh, delivery date is in March. Uh, when, we had put this in last May, delivery date was December. So now the, uh, manufacturer says, if you want them, we can give you your eighteen. I don't wanna change that number. However, it's gonna cost ninety thousand dollars more and delivery date we can schedule for March. So I, I, I think our order's still good, I don't wanna change it and, uh, that sixteen and a half percent increase, from what I was sold is that, uh, the materials that build these transformers are competing with EV R materials, uh, for the batteries. So the fluctuation in price and the delay of another three months, vice, we're looking at seven months, now we're looking at ten months. Uh, the remaining part of the order, you should know, the single-phase pole mounts, probably won't see those till September and then the single-phase pad mounts are sometime in June. So those are getting pushed out another three, four months on that. So having said that, are there any questions?
Thanks, Steve. Any questions for Steve? Go ahead, Paul.
Appreciate that, Steve. So, can you help me here? We had a bid, uh, competitive bid?
Yes.
And it come in at one point five, one point six, and then the, now they come back with a, does this constitute a change order? This change order is over and above what our bid limit is. I'm doing, I guess I'm asking a legal question.
What is the original contract saying was it fixed price at that time or was it subject to change? No, it wasn't fixed. They, they told us that the prices are subject to change. This is the current price today, but we can't guarantee it.
But that's from this vendor?
Correct.
So he had, there were, was there other competitive bidders?
Yes, there was one other competitive bidder, but they didn't bid on all the items, as we recall. They only bid it on a few select items.
So this is sole source then? Is that one way we could construe this?
Put it out, uh, there was only one contractor who could actually do it. Actually supply it. So that could supply all of the order. If, if you piecemeal between the two, you may have, um, had a couple, they had a couple things that were lower, but then they had a couple of things that were higher. So at that time, we thought it was advantageous to stick with one supplier. Um, and I think it was after the fact that we looked at this and thought we could piecemeal in other, um, suppliers. But the whole idea was trying to get in queue in line because they were telling us it'd be seven to eighteen months before we'd get anything. Um, as a sole source, no, there's other manufacturers, but, uh, their, all I know of the other factor was their delivery time was twenty to twenty-four months. That was a critical part of the decision there. No one can deliver within, by December, to which GenPac thought, or within the twelve to eighteen months. I can pull that all back up, that record and distribute it via email so everybody can refresh their minds, their memories rather.
It passes legal muster. I mean, I, I, I don't want to risk not getting these things and coming in with a lot higher price as long as we can.
I think that's fine. One of the original contracts that it was. Well, you may say this again here when I come back.
No, no.
Well, I'm saying when the, the, the single-phase pad mounts that they say they can deliver in June, they'll, uh, I'll probably be near March, April, seeking approval.
Yeah.
And validation at what price they gave us at the beginning, if there's a price increase. And then I'll, we'll repeat that here in September with the pole mounts. So it's appropriation and change three times now.
Market's crazy. I, I do know that it won't, you know, maybe it would, but it would be odd if it went down in the future. I think we better grab it and run.
Anything else?
Does Jet Doc, um, use car lots? After I got sticker shock from the other one and read this one, I fell down again. I think, I think Paul's right, like, what are we doing? But, I mean, it's a scam. It's the way you scam the government, that you know that you have money, you just keep increasing it. I know you're over, you're over a barrel, what do you do? You gotta have it and then they're one holding all the cars.
But you do go off of competitive bidding and.
Yeah.
We've done that and that's, you know, the tools we have.
Yeah. But all the companies know they have it, so we're fair.
So I would move for approval of resolution F dash one zero four.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second to approve resolution F one zero four, our transformer purchase price increase. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Steve. Resolution F one zero four passes. Okay, resolution F one zero five, um, adoption agreement for specialty benefits. Mark.
This is a quick one. Uh, so we have a longstanding, uh, relationship with, uh, Waddell and Reed, uh, as a provider of our four fifty-seven deferred compensation plan. They're now known as Riverview Wealth Strategies. Every one of our deferred comps, I think, has changed names in the past four years, but I digress. Uh, so what this is, is they, they have, uh, a third party that actually, they, this is a platform to which they do the administration of our, our plan. Uh, it's, uh, also an online portal for, uh, us as, as clients to be able to get in and, and look at our account and do transactional kind of things. So, uh, with their decision to move to a better vendor, they, I'll tell you, just from personal experience, the old one was garbage. Um, it was very hard to access. There were, there were just problems on the back end that, that, uh, Waddell and Reed can kinda share with us. So they went out and, and searched for a new, new platform. Um, this is no cost to us, it's just, we have to adopt the agreement so we can have, uh, Waddell can, or Riverview Wealth can actually, uh, enter chiny, um, employ plan participants into this, uh, new system. So, uh, I'll try to answer any questions you have, but this is probably the easiest resolution of the night.
Yeah, exactly. Anything questions for Mark?
I have one. Um, just 'cause I'm totally unfamiliar with this, I'm assuming this is the retirement plan for the city employees?
This, this is, you know what a 401K is?
Yeah.
This is like a 401K, but for governmental employees.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's a retirement strategy. You know, the city does match, um, different percentages for different groups of employees, um, anywhere from, uh, you know, flat monthly to up to four and a half percent for, for certain groups and it's, it's a great way to say for, for the future.
Right. And what's our policy, 'cause I'm totally unfamiliar here, what's our policy with how the employees give comments about when, when we may change our policy?
Well, the employees really don't have a say in this, 'cause we don't really have a say in this. You know, so our provider has decided to, you know, to switch to a different, uh, you know, platform and so we just have to sign the agreement to be, um, to have our plan participants on their, on their portal.
That's kinda what I understood by reading that they were just moving to a company that's better.
Yeah. In, in this, in this, it doesn't change anything about, you know, our defined benefits or, you know, our benefits or what our contributions are, anything like that.
Okay, that was my next question.
Yeah, yeah, so to the employees, they'll just have a better online portal to use.
Great, perfect.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I would move for approval of resolution F zero one six.
Sorry.
One zero six.
I think you have a.
One zero five, excuse me. No, sorry. One zero five.
Yes, a motion and a second for approval of F one zero five, uh, adoption agreement for special benefit. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Mark. How we all doing? We still got a few more things we wanna power through? Okay, good. Let's do that. Be mindful of, we've been sitting here a while, so. Okay, Mark, uh, resolution F one zero six, the Bitco service agreement renewals.
Yeah, these just renewal our various building agreements with Bitco for HVAC services. Uh, about a six, little over six percent increase, uh, from, uh, our fees last year. Bitco provides excellent service to us. They're timely, they do excellent work. Um, if we have a problem, they're a phone call away and they're here, you know, usually within minutes, uh, to be quite honest. Uh, they've done, uh, a lot of, uh, maintenance repair, preventative maintenance stuff over the years. I mean, they're, they're a great company to work with. Um, I have no complaints, um, from anybody on, on the work that they perform, uh, for the city of the last, at least since I've been here. I would, I would strongly recommend that you approve, uh, these agreements.
Thanks, Mark. Any questions on our Bitco service agreement renewals?
Been here a long time, I move for approval of resolution F dash one zero six.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second for the passage of resolution F one zero six, our Bitco service agreement renewals. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Mark. Resolution F one zero six passes. Cindy, resolution F one zero seven, committing resources, the GASP issue.
Thank you, your honor. Um, this is basically a housekeeping item for you all, as you recall, except for our good council members. We do this every year. This is, um, committing some of our, committing our revenues to the appropriate place. So GASP fifty-five, fund balance, uh, GASP being the Government Accounting Standards Board, um, they have a requirement that we look at all of our fund balances and in doing so, we have to look at our revenues. So when our revenues come in, all of those governmental revenues, we could just put in the general fund and put them in the pot. There are a few times we cannot do that. We cannot do that for our REIT funds. Our REIT funds have to be in a separate fund. We cannot do that for criminal justice, that has to be in a separate fund. We cannot do that for the street funds, that has to be in a separate fund. But things like parks and recreation, um, our residential street program, our arterial street program, and all of our other special revenue funds, we've chosen to put those in a separate fund. We've chosen to do that to increase transparency to our citizens so they can see exactly what money's coming in for that program and exactly what we spent. And if there's money left over in that program, it stays in that fund and rolls into the next year for that program. If it all went to the general fund, it would all go into the pot for everybody to kinda fight over. So we've chosen to make all these special revenue funds, but in doing so, we have to, you have to commit those funds. There's two levels here. One, the finance committee took action today, they assign funds. So things like interest, we're gonna keep interest there. We're going to do, this is the smaller things. Finance committee says, okay, we're gonna roll those over here. The bigger things that are commitment, um, are things like the parking recreations, that's a really good example. And the other really good example is the residential street program. That means we're taking all that and we're pushing it right over into these funds to be spent on those areas only. Um, there's another level of fund balance, which is, um, when you can't spend it at all. That's like when we have inventory, you know, like there are some departments, like the street department, they have inventory. So obviously you can't spend that if not cash. Um, but what I'm asking you to do is to approve resolution F one oh seven, which will commit the funds on the little, on the resolution. And I had attached on that for you to look at with the assignment piece that finance committee took action on today. That was just for information. Um, Councilman Lightman called and asked about that, so I don't think I typically attach that to the resolution. And she just asked some clarifying questions, which is why I'm trying to explain it a little And she did ask some clarifying questions, which is why I'm trying to explain a little deeper than I have in the past. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Cindy. Any questions for Cindy on Committing Our Resources here?
Senator, this is how somewhat common the Governmental Accountings Board wants legislative confirmation of how we are assigning our funds. How we used to do it on our own, but now they want confirmation. It's just a housekeeping item. So I would move for approval of Resolution F dash one zero seven.
Thank you. A motion of second to approve Resolution F one zero seven, Committing Resources. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Cindy. Resolution F one zero seven passes. Let's move on to ordinances, our 2023 Budget Ordinance Y thirty-five, Cindy.
That is me, Your Honor, and I'm going to try to pull up here if I can see where I. I'm in the month thing, hold on. No wonder, wrong budget. So I took what you all said at our last meeting and went back and did some work on the discretionary funds. You really didn't have a lot of comments about the stuff that was already basically operationally budgeted, but you did have some comments on some of these discretionary items, and I'm going to pull that up here. Pop down here to show Mark I can actually learn how to do something. I believe I just shared something successfully without assistance, I should probably get a round of applause. So when I heard you talk about, what I took notes about in our last meeting, and so I thought I would just go through and talk about each one of these items, or the ones that we talked about, so I can tell you what those changes were. Yes, we kept the land use study, as spoken about tonight. We have lined through and not funded the project manager. We moved the childcare scholarship from down in Parks and Recreation up into legislative. And we added some money for streets. That was a conversation I heard from multiple people, so I was able to add some, and I added a hundred thousand dollars to the street department for next year. Fire department, there were no changes. They are getting their non-career uniforms equipment and the replacement of their services. Police, we've lined through the detective for right now. There are two patrol officers, two patrol officers in this budget, no admin secretary. They received two patrol cars. The conference room was eliminated based on conversation between the chief and Mark, and then we reallocated some of those funds. Yes, the video cell boosters, yes, the hard drive expansion. The additional patrol overtime is funded at this time. They already have a fairly substantial overtime budget. I do understand and listen to the chief's budget that overtime is not going to be eliminated, obviously, with two new patrol officers, but the hope is that that will start to cut down the other direction. So we'll kind of monitor that throughout the next year. Yes, on the metalistic shield, yes, on the fire hooks. The water cooler's actually been purchased, the shares, so I removed that. We added the digital fingerprinting, although the digital fingerprinting was initially in it, and it's a yes. We've added drones and added less lethal ammunition. Those became ad after we removed the conference room. The two public work UTBs, yes, the replacement of the DI three unit, added a Parks and Recreation director. That's going to be funded from the Parks and Recreation Fund, and we're just going to monitor that to see how that flows in through their cash flow. Obviously, they're not going to start on January first, so I don't, I threw a hundred fifty thousand dollars in there. No idea, I doubt they'll use that much. Popping down into the utility department, that's yes, on the city hall generator, yes, on the stent seam. There was discussion about the two vehicles, the meter tech specifically, and I believe we talked about possibly using some. Todd, thank you.
Conservation one.
Conservation funds for that. We can always come back and make that an ad, if it's an amendment later. Down in the water department, yes, to their water utility truck, added some money for the fire hydrant, added fifty. Todd and I had a conversation, added fifty thousand dollars, fifty thousand for their fire hydrant program, and added ten thousand dollars for water conservation. Yes, to the front load replacement, and yes, to the sewer Polaris vehicle. All told, that's a little over one point six million dollars that we were able to fund in additional requests to the department. That being said there, that does leave us with ninety-four hundred dollars in unallocated levy, which is a good thing to have in case something comes up we need to utilize some levy money for. And there's a little over two hundred thousand dollars in the mayor's contingency. Y'all know we like to have more money there for when an expense comes up that we haven't already planned for. Given all that, so you have in front of you ordinance Y thirty-five, it did change from the first reading to include all the stuff I just talked about. That leaves us with a budget citywide of forty-three million, five hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred dollars. It balances by fund and it balances revenues to expenditures, they have to do that by state law. I do need to have the budget approved tonight, so if it gets approved tonight, it gets published a week from Thursday and it becomes effective five days after that. So therefore, we would have a legal budget as of January first. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Cindy.
If there are no questions.
Yes.
Sorry.
That's okay. It's only ten o'clock.
Uh, the Parkstrom. Mark, uh, Park.
Director.
It's not on here.
Parks and Director.
Yeah, Parks and Director.
Mm-hmm.
What's the pay for that?
Just salary benefits, I threw a hundred fifty thousand dollars in there. I don't believe there's a job description at this point, so I don't believe salaries are set, but typically trying, and I try to budget for full family, even though I don't know what that person that hires is going to be, so that's probably a little.
We're going to use the kind of department head range, you know, for that salary. But a lot of it, that'll be spent on the job description actually.
That's my salary. That's the final quote and everything too.
That's credit for everything.
Okay.
And then, I guess, the next thing I was wondering, kind of talked about the detective thing, and, sorry, Chief, that was for you. Were you gonna, were you gonna attack that some other way or sort of uphiring that? Or how are we gonna manage all the workloads there?
Well, right now, I have a detective sergeant that I put in there two days ago. He'll take over February sixth, and I have a detective coming back, and we're not going to add any more investigators at that time. So if and when we're ever able to get an additional detective, then it would be two detectives and sergeant and half position. So right now, I'm helping with the overload as well as the detective. We are getting caught up. We are making, we are making a difference right now. But in the future, if we're able to get two detectives and a sergeant at that position, that would be.
Anything else?
We're getting ready to say something.
Your Honor, I would move for the third and final reading of passage, and passage of ordinance Y thirty-five in title and summary form only, and place before us for final passage.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion of second for the third and final reading of ordinance Y thirty-five entitled in summary form only, and that it be placed before you all for final passage. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie.
Ordinance Y thirty-five, an ordinance adopting the budget for the city of Washington for fiscal year end in December thirty-third, twenty twenty-three, providing for the effective date thereof.
Thank you. Councilwoman Overhauser. Councilman Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilman Bartels.
Aye.
Councilwoman Weisman. Councilman Gard.
Aye.
Councilman Hilton.
Aye.
And Councilman Postuma. Wonderful, thank you, Cindy. Our Y thirty-five passes. Ordinance Y thirty-six is our final budget amendment for twenty twenty-two.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So this is a very long budget amendment, because we haven't had one this year. This is our first and only budget amendment, that's a pretty good deal. So basically, what happened throughout the year, as expenses are made. Pardon me, I can't hear you.
What's going on?
I'll just pop. So the entire budget amendment is nine hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred dollars, that accounts for all funds. I tried to put this one together a little differently, in that I kind of went by subject matter within each fund. One of the things that is being in here is the use of our ARPA funds, our ARPA vaccination subsidy, and then the projects that were approved this year, that is in here. Some state mode reimbursements, a therapy to grant, we've been spending money on that, and there was no budget for them to do so yet. And then there are just a few things, general fund wise, some things here and there. Some other items of note, I think, would be specifically the 401 fund, the light fund. They just had some things with some, their on-call pay for alignment, and then some overtime issues that they were, that they needed to address. Water had some things with some of their projects, obviously, but as it all adds up together, it adds up to nine hundred ninety-three seven. It's kind of a long document, four pages, if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Thanks, Cindy. Any questions on our final twenty twenty-two budget amendment?
If there are no questions. Mark?
Any questions?
I would move for the. I would move for the.
Too late now.
First reading of ordinance Y thirty-six, first be considered the second, and the second be considered the third, and it be placed before us for final passage entitled in summary form only.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion of second for the first reading of ordinance Y thirty-six, our twenty twenty-two final budget amendment, and that the first be considered the second, and the third reading entitled in summary form only, and it be placed before you all for final passage. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie.
Ordinance Y thirty-six, an ordinance in section two of ordinance Y nineteen, amending the budget for the city of Washington for fiscal year end in December thirty-third, twenty twenty-two, providing for the effective date thereof.
Thanks, Carrie. Councilmember Overhauser.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartels.
Aye.
Councilmember Weisman.
Aye.
Councilmember Gard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
And Councilmember Postuma. You could. Okay. Uh, ordinance Y thirty-seven, this is our twenty twenty-three salary ordinance, again, looking for all three readings, correct?
Yep. Let's give people pay.
Give people pay, yes, for sure.
As we do every year this time, we bring forth these salary ordinance for the upcoming year. You'll see in here, there's a four percent increase that we're proposing for our non-represented employees. The rest of the increases are all spelled out in the various labor contract. We also did have to make increases to our part-time and temporary staff hourly wages based on the state increased minimum wage. If you have specific questions about this, I will be happy to answer them, so you can see all the information laid out here in front of you.
Thanks. Mark, any questions for Mark?
If there are no questions, I would move for the first reading of ordinance Y thirty-seven, that the first ordinance, the first reading be considered the second, and the second be considered the third, and it be placed before us for final passage entitled in summary form only.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion of second for the first reading of ordinance Y thirty-seven, our twenty twenty-three salary ordinance, and that the first reading be considered the second, and third, and final reading entitled in summary form only, and that it be placed before you all for final passage. Any final, any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie.
Ordinance Y thirty-seven, an ordinance fixing the salaries and compensation for a point of officers and employees of the city of Washington, fixing the effective date thereof, repealing ordinance Y twenty-eight, providing for the effective date thereof.
Thanks, Carrie. Uh, Councilmember Overhauser.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartels.
Aye.
Councilmember Weisman.
Aye.
Councilmember Gard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
And Councilmember Postuma.
Aye.
Thank you, Mark. Ordinance Y thirty-seven passes. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our action items. Uh, any staff reports, Mark?
Uh, in the interest of time, I guess we'd know, and then have a happy holiday season, everybody be safe. You know, the streets, you know, the way they are, we do a great job, but you travel outside the city limits, good luck.
Okay, thanks, Mark. I want to say thank you all for a great, another great year. Thank you for your service to the community. A pleasure working with you all, and I hope you have a, like Mark said, a safe holiday season. Teresa.
Nothing, thank you.
Paul.
Oh, just to congratulate staff and the mayor, Cindy and Mark for the budget, and actually council too. I think everyone did a great job in the discussions. It was compromises all the way around, and it was, it was good. That's all, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Vince.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay, yep.
I want to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Oh, no, we'll be back before New Year.
Yep.
So Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and whatever you celebrate, so thank you all.
Thanks.
Yes, stay safe on these icy roads.
Uh, I just want to say thank you to the heavy equipment operators, I mean, they're working late hours, nonstop, and if you just see the things that don't look perfect for the problem areas, then knock to the stuff that's done well. And there's a lot of stuff that's done well, so I want to say thank you to them.
Uh, yeah, a happy holidays to everybody, and thanks to the staff, that's good work.
Merry Christmas, everyone. Yeah, thanks to staff for putting up with me, and you. I do have questions, so, uh, this is my knowledge, I'm sorry that I sometimes have that.
Don't be sorry.
And also, I would like to say all of my hopes and prayers for my life, and I think that would be just thanks to all of you.
Okay, that concludes our regular part of the meeting. However, we do have an executive session, so I'm going to ask everybody to leave except for. To the next one.
To determine four o'clock.
Oh, that's right, four o'clock on the twenty-seventh, I'm sorry. So that would be the.
So we're going to actually cancel the next regularly, the twenty-seventh.
Correct. That's, that's right, that's right. We'll cancel that. So are we, are we ready? As far as Zoom, everybody back on? If we are, I would accept a motion to adjourn this meeting till four o'clock on December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two.
We'll move.
Say it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.